Here in the in the council chambers and if you're joining us online, remind you to please keep yourself muted unless you're called upon to speak. Right, everybody ready? And no common council is now in session, would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Would you please call the roll? Okay. All right, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Bukovic, Alderman Doherty, Alderman Galhard, Alderman Bailey, Alderman Schmalsling, Alderwoman Shaw.
Schmalsling is. All right, so we do have a quorum. Next item is public comment Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there someone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? I don't see anybody in the council chambers wishing to be recognized to speak to a non-agenda item. Is there anyone joining us on the Zoom that would like to speak? If so, you may unmute and introduce yourself, state your name and address, please. All right, appears we have no one for public comment then. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which has nine items. One is minutes of our meeting held November fourteenth, the approval of the monthly reports. The rescheduling or the cancellation of our second meeting in December. Because it falls on December twenty sixth when City Hall is closed and many people are gone for the holidays. So we'll just have one meeting in December. Then the approval of five payments. Those payments are for contracts that we've already approved and the work's already been done. These are just payments. And then finally denial of a claim. If anyone want to remove any of those nine items and consider them, or can we keep them all on the consent agenda? Seeing no one, can I have a motion then to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Move Alderman Doherty, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bailey. And without objection, we'll consider the consent agenda adopted, seeing no objection, we will move on. All right, old business, this is the National League of Cities Service Line Program. So after consultation at our last meeting, I did speak with the city administrator. And we had talked about the just removing this, pulling this item. However, at our last meeting, because a vote was made by the common council to lay it over to this meeting. The common council essentially voted to put it on tonight's agenda, so I could not remove it. So if there's no motion on this item to approve or anything, it can just die for lack of emotion. So unless anyone wants to speak to it, my recommendation would be to would have been to pull the item from the agenda.
I thought we were waiting for additional information on this.
So we we were and we also we so Alderwoman Bukovic and I have also talked with a number of people who don't live in our community who've had some bad experiences. And so that's what have been my recommendation would have been to remove it. And I'd already told Alderwoman Bukovic that I was intending to withdraw my recommendation for approval tonight. And so, but I couldn't just pull it off the agenda because we'd voted to put it on tonight's agenda. And Alderwoman Bukovic was ready to have several people come and actually tell us their stories. So I figured if all we've gotten is the negative in the last two weeks, then I'd rather just pull it from the agenda and move forward. So. Yes, Alderwoman. You need to speak in your microphone.
My my main thing is that and I want to be clear, the reason I didn't like this is because of the city putting their name on a for profit. And I actually, when we went to the city League of City. I talked with the rep from Wisconsin. Nice guy did not of of the service that could be done, plus talking with other Milwaukee area people and Milwaukee alderpeople. That they did this twenty years ago about and had so many issues. Now there is, and I believe that there is something the city can do, which is inform people that this is their responsibility, just in on in the newsletter, maybe next time. And say that there are services that are out there and you know, and and maybe list some of the services that are out there, which is fine. Because I think the main goal of this was to make sure that people were aware that this is their responsibility and that there are insurances, one way or the other, whoever they are, they can cover it. So that is just the the main reason why I personally was against it, but. Yeah.
It is important that our residents understand that the service line, that once you reach the shut off valve, which if you're in a community or in a neighborhood with sidewalks, it's right by the sidewalk. And if you don't have sidewalks, then it's usually right at the edge of the right of way. Like by the drainage dish or whatever is where your shut off is, everything from that point to your home is your responsibility. And we do have aging infrastructure. We do have homes in the city that are seventy, eighty, ninety years old. Most of the city is built in the sixty seventies and eighties, but there are a lot of, there's still a lot of aging infrastructure. So it is important that we do make sure that people recognize that. You know, if you live in a seventy or an eighty year old home, you may be replacing your service lines and having to replace plumbing. And those are entirely the responsibility of the homeowner. So. All right. So if there's no action, no one's making a motion, then we can just move on to this item. It'll just fail for lack of emotion. All right, items of new business. First is the North Shore Library fundraising efforts.
Ms. Gold from the North Shore Library District is here to provide a fundraising update on the new North Shore Library. So I'll turn it over to her if she wouldn't mind coming up to the speaker.
I don't know if you've spoken to us before, but there's a little red light here when you're talking. If you can just kind of be looking down and make sure it's on, if it shuts off, that means you're not least speaking directly into the mic and the folks on the Zoom won't be able to hear you.
How's that?
Okay, thank you all for having me here this evening to give a brief update on our fundraising efforts at the library. As you know, we have been given the space by the developer, Bill Lamocchia, to put in our new structure and we have twenty five thousand square feet of the space that needs to be filled. So the space itself is worth an estimated four to six million dollars. And if you'll you'll notice throughout my presentation that some of these numbers seem to be creeping and leaping up there. And a lot of that is due to supply chain economics and other various supply chain and employment issues and and whatnot. So some of the numbers are good, some of them are not as good as they were six months ago when I started working here at the library, shall I say. The primary source of our fundraising efforts have been so far been dealing with our larger donors and by that I mean folks in the community who have the the resources and the wherewithal to to give a very sizable donation. Those donations have not come in yet. We have been told by numerous sources that they are looking at providing that information to us at the end of the year. So that's one of the things we're waiting for. I hope to have better news for you, like maybe the first part of January as far as that goes. So as of now, we have none of those you know, large, big scale donations that we could use towards a real large scale campaign where we could have you know, matching opportunities or other other options. There were some individuals in Bayside met a few weeks ago with the PEC Foundation for a fundraising and talking at the library campaign and the library event. I haven't heard anything more than that on that event. So I'm hoping to hear some more information on that. And that we get some some good results generated from that meeting as well. Our library foundation has pledged over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Once the shovels go in for the building, so that is coming. We've had various donations from other individuals in the community. These are mostly small scale donations ranging up to five thousand dollars. So we are not necessarily snowballing, but we are starting some of that process and it seems like more of that money is coming in on a weekly basis. So the word is getting out there and people are aware of it. So we just need to have more of a concerted effort to get that that aspect of the campaign going. Once we know more about our larger scale donations. And I think you've all heard about the budget appropriation that's been asked for by Gwen Moore. We don't know where that stands within the House of Representatives, so I hope to hear more on that as well soon. And let's see. Just in some non fundraising information, the site has been cleared, so they're they're making progress as far as that goes. They there was a meeting a couple of weeks ago with the Bayside Architectural Committee and or Architectural Review Board, I guess it was. And they have approved the the design of the building and the materials that will be used in construction so that they will be long lasting and sustainable. And let's see, I guess finally, the the number that I think you're probably all wondering what what has been our our big increase, which leads to our bigger ass all the time, is that as of right now, that the build out for the building, which would include HVAC, fixtures, furniture, all of the stuff that would go into into the shell of the structure up in Bayside is currently at seven million dollars. So we are looking at a more a more robust campaign ask than we were anticipating earlier. And I don't doubt that we'll get there, but it might take a little more time. And that number is currently based on and what I would call like the best of the best of the best. So if I look at it from that perspective, I think that we we have room to make some changes within you know, my not minor tweaks, but there is room for some adaptations within the design and then of course adaptations within what we actually put in it in terms of you know, like extremely high quality materials versus higher quality materials kinds of things. So there's some 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 wiggle room there with that number, but we'll get the final amount from from Rinca and from the construction folks, I think, next week. And with that, I will ask if you have any questions for me.
So I'm I'm going to start. So we've been very clear with the other three communities that we were willing to go in on the library, but the city of Glendale is not in a position to be able to put forward any capital expenditure. So it does sound like this process is going a little slower than folks anticipated.
Yes.
But you know, for example, our entire borrowing next year is for the North Shore Fire Department. We can't tack on any additional. We're we we limit ourselves to around nine or ten million dollars. And we're spending it all on the North Shore Fire Department. So if the library were to come back and ask for a capital from the city of Glendale, that's going to be a no from the very get go.
I don't expect to do that.
Yeah, and I and I know we we do, we do put forward whatever you need for your budget in terms of the operating expenditures every year, and we pay half of the cost of the library because we're half of the population. But so I mean, do you feel confident working with the the fundraising team that the money is going to be raised? You do?
I do.
Okay.
Yes, I do. I would not sit here in front of you and and say any of the things I've said to you, if I did not believe this was all going to happen.
Okay, and we'll have the money and time to be able to pay for things when they need to be paid for and not force a Bayside to have to put out bonds to to for the.
I expect that we will have money in hand.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I would be very disappointed if we didn't, but I don't expect the project to move forward if we don't.
Okay, that's the other thing. You don't expect the project to move forward if you don't. Okay. I appreciate that as well. So I'm going to start. I've got number one and number two over here. So
Yes.
And I'm sure probably number three by the time.
I just have one quick question. And you may not be able to answer this, but when they came in and they told us that they had private donors lined up. Why? And they they were very confident, but why is it taking so long to get those private donors lined up when they were ninety nine percent sure that they had this and that they, you know, we had to, we had to agree before they could get a a signature on it. And now we have agreed for six months, I think it is, they're close to a couple of months. And now we they still don't have signatures on it. That is making me a little bit worried, but maybe you can explain.
I really can't explain, but I can theorize. I think what is happening is that the larger donors wait until the end of the year to see where some of their own finances fall and then that's when they do their charitable giving. Okay.
But I'm just confused. We had the fundraising folks in, they gave a timeline. We asked very specific questions about what would names, dollar amounts, where we'd be. We're not anywhere near what was promised. But this is, we're we're way past months. So I guess I'm as a person sitting here and I know everyone's doing their best, but I would say this this appears to be not much further along than it's been for a long time. So I guess I'm disappointed. I don't really need an answer. But I'm just saying, from what we were promised and reports we are going to hear from, like why I'd like to see the firm here who's fundraising. They seem to be competent folks on paper that they presented well when they were here. I haven't heard from them since.
First, I like to thank you for coming down because you're relatively new and you're going to kind of coming into a difficult situation. And all of us have been involved in this for quite a quite a bit of time, but let me just ask you. So assuming that the donations don't come forward and whatnot. Is it your understanding that you'll just stay in your current location then indefinitely until such time as there is money to go forward with this project?
That would be my expectation, yes. You know, in the meantime, we still have our current space. We still have business to take care of, patrons to serve and things like that. So that that type of work won't go by the wayside in any degree and you know, the fundraising efforts, I I would hope that I have a better picture for you in January or February. I'm going to say January based on what I've been told, but given that things move like molasses sometimes, I would expect that it may be later January than early January. But I agree, it's been, it's been a long process. It's been yeah, and I'll be honest, it's been a bit frustrating for me as well, coming into this, knowing that you know, there's been expectations of, you know, X amount of dollars being raised in a very short period of time and and I know it appears to counsel that, you know, very little is going on, but a lot goes on behind the scenes as I'm sure you can, you know, you can assume that you know, we meet, we talk, we meet, we talk and we reach out to people and I think just given how quickly that the space was available, there wasn't a lot of time to really put forward a good plan to to really do a cohesive and and thorough fundraising effort just because of you know, how quickly things happened. You know, even before I got here in May, there was that expectation that you know, X million of dollars would be raised by a certain period of time and and you know, even I knew then coming into here with with little knowledge of what had happened here and, you know, thought that was a little unrealistic to say the least, but as we move forward, I think, you know, the more that the communities are aware of what's going on and and the efforts we're making, I think the dollars will come in. It's just taking a significantly longer period of time than any of us thought.
One quick question, not necessarily to her, but yourself, sorry. If if this let's just say if this doesn't happen and they stay in their present building. Aren't we out of an agreement with that present building?
We're in for fourteen. We we only get released from that when the library is able to move into the new space.
But I thought we we gave a.
We did, and then the council reconsidered to order to make that forward, which hasn't happened.
Okay, that's where I wanted to understand. Okay, I got it.
The shell of the building is being built. The completion of the interior of the building, the build out will only happen once the money is raised to pay for that. So the shell of the building is being built. There will be apartments above it. It's a multi-story building. If it takes the library committee an extra year or something to come up with money, then there will just be that much longer until the library is able to do the build out on that first floor. It'll still be a vacant business looking space that just won't be built out until the library has the money to move there and then the library would move. Then, once the library moves to a new location, then the city of Glendale then is able to retake its first floor space that we have right now is the current library home and then we can do with that whatever we want.
Meantime, we collect our dollar.
Yeah. Yep. Do you have any? Do you have any questions or thoughts?
Thing that's going through my head, it's has nothing to do with the library, just the economy itself. You have to realize with what things are going on. I mean, your bottom dollar at home is going through the same functions as what they're doing here to do the fundraising. So when people aren't doing well in the markets, they're not going to be able to fundraise right off the bat. So raw materials have gone up. I mean, your grocery bill has gone up. So taking consideration what they're doing is trying to move forward and unfortunately it's going slower than anticipated just because the economy itself. So don't think it's all we should have went ahead and built their own. I don't think we would have the same issues. So I think they're actually doing as well as they can considering the economics that are involved.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Well, thank you so much for coming and giving us an update.
Thank you very much.
Yep, and we look forward to send us an email in January, but you got a number. Hopefully there's a bunch of zeros after the number, so.
So as well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is fire station eighty two. That is the Glendale Station, an update here. We did have in our packets a timeline. The North Shore Fire Department Board is meeting on Wednesday morning to review the bids. Well, we actually reviewed the bids already. We decided to hold off on approving one of the bids. While Glendale, well, actually, we explored several other financial financing opportunities. But it comes back to Glendale is going to be the borrower, which is what we had always expected. So we've we've got all of that lined up. So that's kind of where we are and I'll turn it over to Carl for additional information.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so in front of you guys tonight and the public is a general timeline for the borrowing for fire station number eighty two, which is right to our south. The plan is come spring, the existing building will be demolished. The fire station will be temporarily relocated to a location that we don't know quite yet. And once the building is demolished, the construction will then begin, which should last in excess of a year to build the brand new building. Before any of that can happen, the fire board needs to meet on Wednesday morning and approve a resolution seeking the seven North Shore communities to adopt a resolution saying they agree to financially contribute towards the construction of this loan towards the the construction of the new fire station number eighty two. So they plan to do that on Wednesday. Once that occurs, each municipality is under a timeline with the latest date being probably January sixth of twenty twenty three to adopt those resolutions to state that they are in. And I believe all seven municipalities must adopt that resolution as well as the fire board in order to move forward with this project.
The the vote at the North Shore Fire Department Board must be unanimous. All seven communities that present at the board have to agree. And then they have to go out to the seven communities. Our vote here doesn't have to be unanimous, but it has to pass the council. So even if it passed on, you know, a four to two vote in in, you know, in all the communities, it has to pass all seven communities. The fire department board has to be unanimous because it has to be seven communities approving at the board and seven communities have to approve the resolutions before the borrowing can take place. Alderman Doherty?
Oh, they're committing to the entire bond obligation, the time it takes, right? If something changes down the road, we're not stuck on our end.
That is correct, and the resolution would would allow then the other six communities to then pay Glendale back for their portion of the borrowing for this new fire station. So we want to make sure that that occurs prior to us then later in January adopting an initial resolution to then borrow the funds. And the the construction cost right now is about eight point seven million dollars. That includes the North Shore Health Department also relocating and becoming a tenant in the facility. They would pledge, I believe upfront about one point two million dollars towards the construction of their portion of the building as well as some shared space. So they would share obviously the HVA system over there as well, some conference and some meeting rooms as well. Each with her own dedicated space as well. So the total is eight point seven million in borrowing. The total project is more than that because both communities or both districts are putting up money upfront. North Shore Fire has some funds on hand that they are putting up front as well as the health department. They received some revenue as a result of the COVID, so they have that money to put up front. So I just wanted to provide this this sort of general timeline and general money that we're talking about. The time when we would approve our initial resolution would be January ninth of twenty twenty three, not twenty twenty two as listed on here. In order to authorize the competitive bonds of sale. And then we would move forward from there to hopefully secure the borrowing before February to allow them then to sign the contracts and move forward with it. So shovels can go in the ground sometime in probably end of March, early April.
Our next meeting, so when we meet as a library board on Wednesday morning and approve the resolutions, both of those resolutions are going to be on our next agenda. We have to consider them before January sixth. Once all the communities have our January ninth agenda is the one that's going to have us approving the borrowing. So basically the resolution being approved by all the other communities means they're all on the hook that they're going to pay their share. So if we go out and borrow nine million dollars, we want to make sure that everybody's giving us what they're supposed to give us every year to pay the bonds back. So. But we have, and this is actually the same borrowing structure that we use for the renovation of the Shorewood and Whitefish Bay Library or Fire Departments, you said library. Fire Departments. And so Shorewood borrowed for the Shorewood Fire Department and Whitefish Bay borrowed for the Whitefish Bay Fire Department and we're borrowing for the Glendale Station, so.
And one last thing, I don't have the specific numbers in front of me and we'll present them at our December twelfth meeting, but the the bid came in higher than anticipated by the architects. I don't think there's a surprise on there, but we will present you with with how much over and what the cost was.
And like I said, there is, as Carl indicated, some capital money, there is some money coming out of fund balance from the fire department as well as from the health department to pay toward the construction, so. Yeah.
And we're also working on a new North Shore Health Agreement that expires next year, so we can have that in place before we have that obligation. So then it doesn't tie Glendale, who would be the new home of the health department with funding the health department if this agreement isn't approved. So we're moving towards that as well.
Questions? Thank you for the update. Next is review and approval for professional services agreement for utility billing services with City Water.
Thank you, Mayor. Just give me one second to pull up that memo. We have time here from City Water. And essentially this agreement with City Water would provide a thirteen month agreement at a monthly cost of three thousand dollars. If you analyze it, it's thirty six thousand dollars for City Water to perform utility billing services for the city. We advertised for this position twice, one at the original market rate for the position. The city council did review the city's pay classification system. We moved this position into a new classification system at a higher rate. We moved this position into a new classification system at a higher rate. Um, I'm trying to look up what that is. Just give me one second. And we received, um. No candidate, no successful candidates as a result of that. Uh, the salary range was advertised, uh, just over forty-nine thousand to just over sixty-three thousand dollars. Um, so this agreement would be for a twelve month period, thirty-six thousand dollars. We would have it expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, it would allow them to perform our utility billing services as well as take phone calls, deal with the customers. Um, and prepare everything. And if you have any questions, Tom can specifically answer it. They perform these services for other municipalities around us, including Brown Deer, Mequon. Um, you know, Port Washington and Grafton.
Questions from. All right. Well, we do have a recommendation from the city administrator that we approve the thirteen month agreement with City Water. To conduct the water utility billing services. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
A vote.
Move Alderman Gelhard, second of Alderman Doherty. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It is approved. Thank you for coming out tonight, even though we didn't have to ask you anything. So. All right. Uh, next item is review and approval of municipal general obligation loan for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Capital improvements program. I'll turn it over to the city administrator.
Thank you again, Mayor. So the resolution is, um, sitting on your desk. It came in late on Friday, so we weren't able to get it to you. Um, or actually not Friday. It was a short week, so Wednesday, um, which is the resolution to borrow. Um, nearly seven point five million dollars, which is for our twenty twenty-two and twenty-three capital improvement projects. It allows us to, um, fund these, um, capital improvements. And I have, uh. Sean Lancer, our deputy city administrator here, he knows this a lot more than I do. So if you have any specific questions, I know you guys have looked at this in the past. I will ask him to come up and, and answer those.
I guess the, the first question is, um. Five point seven five interest rate, is that? How is that falling with other municipal borrowing in, in the, in the region? Are we familiar with other bonds elsewhere?
Well, I'd have to turn that over to Sean if you wouldn't mind coming up here and, you know, again, he knows this a lot more than I do.
Okay. Hello, my question is the, the five point seven five percent. I mean, how is that comparable to? I mean, I, I remember us approving some bond packages, obviously before the height, the inflation of the last year. Where we were getting like three percent, stuff like that. So I'm just curious how this is comparing with what other municipalities around us are borrowing at.
Um, so this state trust, we've done the state trust on loan for our capital improvements program for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. As the mayor stated, our rates were at three or maybe two point seven five the year before that. And with the, um, interest rate curves going out. Even short term, all the way. Through traditionally, you're going to see a lower interest rate in like year one or two, but as you go to the. Ten and twenty, um, typically there's a more of a markup for unknowns going forward. With the way interest rates are reacting in twenty twenty-two. And specifically, if you look at the state of Wisconsin's, um. Board of Public Lands website. Right now their interest rates are five point seven five for five years, ten years and twenty years. And so. Though. If you go to what we're expecting to go to market here, most likely the third week of January. And when you publicly bid and you get interest costs, there's different ways you market. There's stated coupons. There's all inclusive costs that would include it, um, underwriter fees and. Um, bond council fees. There's a lot more professional services in those type of issues with the public market. Where the state trust on loan is very straightforward and you don't. Deal with some of those other professional fees. Um, so getting to the mayor's point, the interest rate might be slightly higher with the state of Wisconsin. Um, but. The difference as we go in a rising interest rate environment as we're currently in. If you, when we compare to like the. Fire department bonds and there'll be a, there'll be a twenty year issue. Most likely those rates are going to be locked for the first eight to ten years before you get a call provision. Where if interest rates drop in the next two, three years with a state trust fund loan. Basically they allow you to call the debt at any time in the first three quarters of the year. So other than the fourth quarter, when they're just getting things. Year end stuff taken care of, um, if interest rates in twenty twenty-four dropped to three point five percent. Even with the state trust fund loan or with general market conditions, we can just call the whole debt issue and refinance the last eight years. Add three point five percent. So.
It's not the same sort of, like, for example, with Bay Shore, we had the bonds de-feased in twenty nineteen by the owners, but. We couldn't call those bonds and I think they're callable pretty soon, right? We just had to have the money sit in a trust fund until the bonds were callable. What you're saying is these could actually be called.
Right away. Correct. Yep. And so your Bay Shore example, two to three issues. Um, were called this year. There's one twenty twenty-five issue outstanding with the Bay Shore issue, but same type of thing. What you, you know, you basically just remove it. You don't have to, when basically those bond, bonds that weren't callable for the Bay Shore, we had to pay whatever those interest rates are. Until the call date and had it pre-funded to defuse it. For these straight calls, you, you know, we could just be done, repay them, just the remaining principal amount. And whatever the current accrued interest was and get to lower interest rate. So it gives us a lot more flexibility on. If interest rates go back down.
Then one other question I have, um, does this amount of borrowing allow, especially with this interest rate? I know we've tried to keep our annual payments about the same because our city budget doesn't get to go up by very much. Thanks to the state of Wisconsin tying our hands. Um, how does this impact us in terms of the annual payments, keeping them fairly level?
I would say fairly level. I haven't run all the numbers, including how the, our share of the fire department issue is. Cause obviously when we approve a eight and a half million dollar issue, it's not going to be eight. It's all a part of our borrowing capacity, but only our twenty-seven some percent share of that will actually be a part of what we're trying to fund. Um, when you look at these items here, you will notice that, um. You know, we have over a. Third of it is utility supported with the water main. Um, or maybe you don't, I don't know if you had those details in your packet, but I can tell you that, uh. That close to three million of it will be funded by a wire utility between these two years of capital projects that we approve. So it's not all tax base fund supported for future principal and interest.
And, and just for other clarification and information, this is seven and a half million dollars. About one, one point one of this is overages on the I forty-three project. Uh, there was a six hundred eighty thousand dollar expense for bridge related work that was never budgeted. That we were required to do as well as five hundred thousand dollars in overages for the I forty-three project as a result of the bids coming in higher than anticipated. So despite those overages, we are still able to keep our budget pretty flat. So it's good work on everybody, um, for the last couple of years to try to. Keep the borrowing as low as possible.
Thank you. All right, Alderman Doherty.
Curious when you talked on this, taking it through, uh, this entity, it's callable when, if we wanted.
Uh, basically with, I think it's a thirty day notice, except for you can't call it. I believe it's the fourth quarter of the year. So, but if it came back that we wanted to call it, you know, next summer, I believe we could even, I'm not sure if there's a one year timeframe. But otherwise it's callable anytime.
The rates are actually straight. I mean, I'm seeing inverted yield curves and what we're going, when I'm borrowing money. So.
Incorrect.
Okay.
And any other questions? Okay. So we do have before us then, uh, for approval, the municipal general obligation loan. Um, as presented by the deputy city administrator and city administrator. Uh, this is the state trust fund loan. So can I have a motion to approve? Move Baldomir Vukovich. Is there a second? Second Baldomir Shaw. Any further discussion? All right, call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda then is commission committee board and staff reports. I will start with the city administrator.
Uh, so I just have one item tonight, Mayor. Thank you. Is, uh, you will see in the hallway that there is a new bulletin board up there with some artwork from local elementary school students. So as you're walking in and you're walking out, um, it's on, if you're walking out, it's on the right hand side. So take a look at it on your way in and out. It will change with the seasons. I still believe there's some pumpkins on there from the fall. So I'm sure come a couple of weeks, they will have some winter stuff up on the bulletin board. So it's an exciting partnership that they look to have that artwork displayed publicly. So I'm glad we were able to work with the school district to, uh, do that.
Thank you. City attorney?
Uh, we, uh, have been working on the final.
Talk into the microphone.
And finalizing.
Got to talk directly into the microphone.
We've been finalizing our briefing in our open records appellate, uh, appellate case.
Okay. Thank you. City clerk? Okay. The chief is not here tonight. Start with number one.
Nothing to report.
Number two.
Nothing to report tonight.
Number three.
Nothing this evening.
Number four.
Nothing to report.
Five is not here. Number six.
I do know the North Shore Library will be meeting on December fifteenth at the library. I will not be in attendance because I will be somewhere warm. And I'm hoping the city administrator will be able to attend. And that's it for now.
All right. And then the only thing I have is the North Shore Fire Department Board is meeting. Um, on Wednesday morning and tomorrow, the Urban Alliance for the League is, has a, a meeting that Carl and I are going to go to Madison. So. Uh, tomorrow for ten to one will be at the Urban Alliance. So those are the only two things I have to report. All right, we are noticed for a closed session. So can I have a motion to convene in closed session, uh, to discuss employee performance evaluation subject to the statute that is. Indicated on our agenda.
A move.
Move Baldomir Doherty, second Baldomir Shaw. All those in favor of convening in closed sessions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session. Uh, it is not anticipated that we will have any business when we come out of closed session. So for those of you who are waiting online, you're going to be placed into a waiting room. You may wait there till we adjourn, but, um, we'll bring you back in for the adjournment, but there, there is no business after the closed session.
Thank you Kurt and Rhonda for coming.
We have now reconvened an open session. We have nothing else on our agenda for consideration. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Second. Moved by Vukovich, seconded by Gelhard, all in favor of adjourning, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you.